Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 24th, 2024 School Committee Meeting located here at the High School PDC. My name's Anthony Tannarella. I officially call this meeting to order, and I will remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded, and I will start with introductions to my left.
Evan Cody.
Ray Bushman.
Stacy Guido.
Good evening, Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent. Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Rob Mullen.
Becky Stanton.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
If you could all please rise for the National Anthem.
Pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ogden, you can sing the National Anthem.
Thank you, too.
At this time, I will entertain a motion for, to approve the September 10th, 2024 School Committee Minutes and the September 10th Executive Session Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I will just add that Executive Session Minutes will not be released at this time. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Two abstains? That carries 402. Citizens' time. Seeing none. Correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to draw our attention to two pieces of information. One, some great news here. Holly Connolly, a sixth grade English teacher, also works at Tavern in the Square and convinced them to use Tinswell Middle School as a donation recipient on behalf of the community efforts by Tavern in the Square. So they received a check last week for just over $1,300 to benefit the Tinswell Middle School. So thank you to Holly for thinking of the middle school, and thank you to certainly our friends and the community for frequenting Tavern in the Square to benefit us. That's good information there, so thank you for that. We will send along a thank you note on behalf of the School Committee and Central Office. The second piece of information on the correspondence, just wanted to keep the committee aware of the work that goes on in our Regional Superintendent Group. As you know, I'm the President of the Merritt Valley Superintendent Association. We had our first meeting last, two weeks ago, on Wednesday, September 11th, actually, and I included the entire slide deck in there for your review, so you can see what our topics of discussion, where we had Executive Committee update, Legislative Committee updates, as well as negotiation discussions. So that is information for you to have, just in the backup. And that is it for correspondence.
Personnel.
Sure. We have a request for maternity leave. Katie Rich, she's due in a couple of weeks. Notification, new hires. We have Adriana Cirillo, TES paraprofessional, Rosemary Denomi, TES paraprofessional, and Jasmine Graemer, who was a paraprofessional, is actually going to move into the K-5 Science Specialist position. So she'll be doing that position, so we wish Jasmine the best of luck there. And that position is available because of a notice of resignation to Katie Laroche, who was a literacy teacher at TES for seven years, who's off to Chelmsford. So that's all we have for personnel at this time.
Thank you. Share the success. Evan?
Sure. Thank you. Last Wednesday, on TES's first early release day, staff engaged in a wide range of professional development opportunities that align directly with our strategy for district improvement. Families have been welcomed to the annual open house this Thursday, the 26th, from 6:00 to 7:00. Families are encouraged to attend with their children as we celebrate the successes of our return to school. TES is looking forward to the third annual Stripes Walk-a-Thon, co-sponsored by the PTO. The walk is scheduled for October 10th. Check out the weekly newsletter from Mrs. Kavanaugh for more details. At TMS, some of the activities and sports have begun. For instance, the season has started for middle school football, middle school cross-country, and middle school field hockey. Additionally, the theater program and student council start next week. The sixth grade has done a great job of transitioning to middle school. Lastly, in advisory, TMS is reviewing the core values of the school: respect, responsibility, perseverance, independence, collaboration, and originality. In THS news, the open house is Wednesday from 6:30 to 8:30, and the senior class officers are here tonight to provide an update on the start of the school year.
All right. Thank you. Subcommittee updates, we have none at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 9A and 9C out of order.
All those in favor?
I'll wait a second.
Oh, second? Sorry.
I'll second, sure. Why not?
I'm not doing well tonight.
It's all right. I gotta have you back.
We do have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That does carry. Dr. Flanagan?
Yes, Mr. Ogden, Mr. Trainor here, to provide a brief overview, and then I think we're gonna kick it off to some students, so.
Absolutely. So first, thank you all for having us here tonight. It's been a great start of the, start of the school year. Evan and Sabrina, we'll share more about that in a moment, but we did want to provide you with an update as we have started the accreditation process. We met with our liaison, Allison Gary, who works for Niasq, and we also have one of her associates coming in in October to give us an overview to the whole staff as well. So that work has begun. We'll have our self-study next November, and then two years after that, in 2027 in November, we'll have our decennial visit. So if some of you were here 15 years ago now, when we, when we did this the first time, and it's a far different process, much less, much, it's scaled down a lot. Mr. Woodlock went through at Groton Unstable a couple of years ago, and the explanation he's given me, as well as what Niasq has shared as well, it seems like it's far less than it was, but still an important thing to do to, so that we are an accredited high school. So, do you have any questions on accreditation? Awesome. All right, so then we're gonna turn it over to our two senior class officers that are here tonight, Sabrina and Evan.
Sure, could you actually tick the slides? Yeah.
So hi, I'm Sabrina. I'm the co-secretary of our class. I was fortunate to be enough, be a part of the senior sidekicks, which there was only 20 of us, and we were allowed to have the opportunity to welcome incoming freshmen and kind of guide them into what high school life is about. So we first started off with tours, and we just said, these are, here are your classes, these are where your teachers are located, and kind of guided them to the various important, like, locations such as the office, auditorium, gym, and other locations they'll need in the future. As well, we had Wynn Games. Wynn is called What I Need. We use this time to either focus on education, or have a time to relax and play like games, or just interact with other students. It's kind of like the breather in between our day. So we kind of wanted to emulate this to our students by playing games of having Oreos on our foreheads and getting it into our mouths. I didn't get to play, which was very rude, but it's fine. But yeah, it was a great experience.
The start of the school year has been really smooth. The sophomore and senior classes have had meetings to discuss their graduation gowns for the seniors and the class rings for sophomores and seniors. Class officer elections ran for all four grades. Of course, we're the senior class officers, and things have been going well.
So already, we have so many athletic games going on, and they're going very successful. We have 252 athletes competing this fall, and incoming games that you should go to, because they're really good at the sports, is on the 18th, we have football, which is our homecoming game, and as well, other homecoming games is field hockey at 11:00 on the 19th, boys soccer at 1:00, and girls soccer at 3:00.
Homecoming planning is going on with the new teams of class officers. The theme this year chosen by the senior class was retro cartoons. There's t-shirts being designed. They should be submitted by now, and every class should have account of all of their shirts and banners that are being created.
So we have many things to look forward to right now and a lot of planning. First, we have Give Kids the World. This is where a group of us get to travel to Florida and help kids who have sicknesses and kind of give them the opportunity to have, like, that dream vacation. And also, it's a great experience for us, because we're not always, like, in front of kids who have these, like, problems, and we get to kind of appreciate, like, other people and what's going on in their lives, and just kind of recognize that. As well, we have Costa Rica. That's another trip that I believe is anyone who signs up, I think.
Yep, that one's great.
Yep, see, that's right. Also, a lot of us are starting to think about college and applying, and we're just trying to help each other get through it, and we do have the opportunity to work with our counselors at Wynn to make our essays and submit our applications as well. We have prom coming up in May, and we've already set up our location, which is at Victoria Hall, and we're just deciding themes, and it's gonna be really exciting. Senior week, we're already planning ideas of, like, going to, like, Canopy or going to the beach, and just kind of getting feedback on that. And as well, our ultimate goal is graduation, which hopefully we all will make it. Questions?
Go ahead, I'll open them.
I'm just really curious, what do you consider a retro cartoon?
Well, we're doing Scooby Doo. So like, the range we're thinking is like Charlie Brown, Scooby Doo, DuckTales. I think another grade is doing, like, The Simpsons. So it's just, like, kind of older cartoons.
From like, the late 1900s?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not old, old.
No, I'm good. Best of luck to you for your last year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Wow, that was easy. Thank you, guys, for presenting to us this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great job. Moving on to item 9C now, for Mr. Ogden, Mr. Trainor, before they get out of here.
Yes.
So we are once again here to look for approval for the trip that we've run for, I'm gonna say, the last 15 years at least now. Mr. Iris would like to take another group of students, New York City. They're looking to travel in December, the weekend of the 13th. The cost per student this year is $450. It is first opened to juniors and seniors, and then, in order to fill the bus, they will also open it up to sophomores as well after that. They'll be staying the one night in New Jersey, catching a show in the city, as well as checking out some other attractions. There's a full description in the packet of the item.
Mr. Chair, this trip has been highly successful over the years. I think the kids have a great experience and opportunity to get into New York City and really experience something a little bit different. So I think it's a great opportunity. Mr. Iris has been very successful at this trip, so I fully support this.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to approve the trip?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries. Thank you, guys, for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Back to our regular scheduled meeting. Unfinished business.
So we'll jump into the slide deck right now, and look at our upcoming meeting dates. As you can see, we have our negotiation session on October 6th, October 2nd, excuse me. Next school committee meeting is October 8th. We'll have several elementary school students here to present, which is always exciting. October 16th, our School Building Committee. October 22nd, our next school committee meeting, Mr. Piper will be here to give a tech update. I believe he intends on having a tech subcommittee meeting before that meeting as well, just to kind of get the committee up to date, up to speed on things, so stay tuned for that. You can see our November meetings, and then, at November 26th, end of November, and I can't believe we're talking about November already, but it's coming. That's generally when we have Mrs. Lewenzek come in with our special ed facilitators, kind of give a student services update as we start to think about budget, because we know the impact that, certainly that has on our budget development as we move forward from there. So that's the schedule of things to come. In terms of the MSBA update, lot going on inside the building. The, on the outside right now, the woodlook soffit is being worked on. That is under the outdoor classroom. They are not yet going to do the, the overhang on the main entrance, but they're gonna focus their work on the outdoor classroom. We have a pic of that, we'll show you in a little bit. The continuing sidewalk preparation all around the courtyard area. They're working on the mound that's gonna separate the middle school courtyard area from Pierce Field. Framing, drywall millwork is ongoing. We have a picture of the millwork on, on one of these slides upcoming. The curtain wall in the front, the framing for the curtain wall on the interior door is just of all complete. Then they'll work on measuring out for glass and ordering the glass, and then they'll work on the outside wall, outside door, and then, of course, the overlook storefront glass that overlooks the courtyard is gonna be ongoing as well. Milestone rooftop units installed by October 4th. Today, there was a big boom crane here, putting a lot of the rooftop units on top of the school. So we're talking about air handling system, HVAC, mechanical. So those things are all here on site, and they're being boom lifted up to the, up to the roof as we speak. So it's kind of exciting to watch, and all that should be fully installed by October 4th. Then they work on the connections inside the school. So the project is ongoing. In other news, at our last School Building Committee meeting, we know that we had this outstanding drake at water issue for, for almost, I feel like it's over a year at this point. It originally came in at about $1.4 million, the assessment. Thank you to Colin Loizell and our select board for working with the Drake and Water Commissioners. The resolution, the final number, is about $60,000, which will be charged to the project. So it came from $1.4 million to $60,000. So that's a number that everyone is comfortable with, and the project, the contingencies in the project are healthy and can certainly afford that $60,000. So that's kind of the high-level MSBA update. I did include some pictures. This is the outdoor classroom that a lot of people will walk down as we go to Pierce Field. You can kind of picture where it is. This will kind of potentially be near the new Tiger Plaza or the new Tiger Plaza. I think there's some discussion happening about that, but for now, it's an outdoor classroom. And that's the, the woodlook soffit, that, that, one of the sections of that, that we're working on right now. Why say "we"? Not me, that's for sure. This is an interior photo of the black box. You can see the catwalk is installed on the second level, so work is ongoing there. This is the millwork that's in, most of the classrooms now on A2? C2? A2, thank you. So second floor, A2, they're working down on A1 right now, so the millwork is, is being installed. This one, I can tell you that the color palette on the right, for sure, is fall. The color palette on the right is either spring or summer. We're debating that. I'm gonna say spring. But as you know, each hallway has a different theme, so these are two of the themes. So it's nice to see that the tile work is ongoing, and then we'll get the toilet fixtures in, and then obviously floor will be the last thing to go in to some of our bathrooms. And then the next picture is just kind of an aerial shot. You can see how close the schools are, but you can see with that bus canopy, that middle canopy, I really believe, is gonna be an invitation to walk between the schools to get to Pierce Field. And that will be all concrete in that area under the canopy, so.
You can see the outdoor classroom here, too.
You can see the outdoor classroom right there, yeah, thank you for that. So that's to kind of give everyone a sense of what we're looking at. So, so it's exciting, the work is ongoing, and it's, it's on track. It's on track at this point. So happy to answer any questions about the MSBA project.
Just looking at the high school and seeing all those solar panels on the roof. Have we, are we putting solar panels on the middle school?
We are. We are.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Flanagan.
You.
D B, Teaching and Learning. Mr. Woodlock.
Thank you. So this evening, I wanted to provide a first update of our strategic priorities, our SDI for this year. I know it's early, we've just established these goals, but it's not too early to get started. One thing that we've really been focused on as an administrative team, both district and building, is the sense of accountability. Like, every month, we are checking in to say, where are we? What progress are we making? And that's been a really healthy process over the last couple of years, so we're continuing with that. So yes, it's early to be talking about how our progress is on our major strategic district initiatives this year, but the good news is, we're already making progress. So for tonight, in the, you know, essence of keeping things relatively brief, I'm just gonna talk about our first of three strategic initiatives, which is meeting the needs of all students. And this is really like, how are we giving students opportunities to grow? So with each building, we'll, we'll talk about those kind of things, but this all ties into our multi-tiered system of support, which we've been working to build, and focusing, you know, not only the tier one, which is this bottom level, that's our typical classroom, but how are we supporting that tier one with support staff and opportunities for students to get additional support or extension if they need it, and for other students who may need just a little bit more to reach the tier three supports that they need. So those are our real big focus points for these, this strategic objective with these two strategic priorities included. So really briefly, just a couple of things, just right off the start of the school year that we've already begun or begun to implement. The elementary school, at the request of their staff, wanted to add an additional win block. We've talked a lot about win block over the course of the last couple of years. The staff felt that this would really be helpful, giving them flexibility to meet the needs of all students and making sure that they can have the necessary service providers in their room, because we only have a certain number of service providers, whether it's speech, or speech and language, or what have you. So they can't be everywhere at once. So by offering the second win block gives the teachers a lot of flexibility, gives students the extra that they may need, but also allows our service providers more flexibility to meet with different students at different times of the day. So it's a win-win. Secondly, the continuation, the updating of curriculum documents. We've been working a lot with pacing guides at the elementary school, and that's starting to funnel up to the middle school as well, and that's already a specific focus that they've been working on just in the first few weeks. So at the middle school, one thing for sure is they're going to continue with their Keys to Literacy training. This is our third of three years of Keys to Literacy training. We've already had one professional day, release day, so Keys to Literacy was in there, and they've been working with the same professional for all three years, which has been a real nice benefit for the middle school. And with the addition of Katie Leahy, who's our ELA coach, she's working hand-in-hand with ELA, and she's been trained and certified as a Keys to Literacy specialist. So that's the added benefit of having her onboard in that role. Secondly, the increase in communication between administration, teachers, and our MLL staff, which is the new EL staff, they've changed the acronym, but that's been a real focus point for us. It's been really strong at the elementary school, where, to be honest, most of our EL or ML students are right now. But we wanted to make sure that we were increasing our communication with our staff there. So the middle school and the high school, actually, will be having monthly meetings with Kate Walsh, who is our lead, and Brian Ronain, who is our teacher at this campus. Establishing weekly counselor and administrative meetings to address a number of things. Mr. Maringer's already taken this up, and he's begun meeting with the counseling staff each week to talk about students in need, things like absenteeism or anything that might come up that involves our counseling staff. So that communication we, we found needed to be increased, and he's done a great job of already implementing that. Quickly, moving on to THS, the continued procedure for multi-tier student placement to include specific programming options for students requiring specialized instruction. This also relates to our win block, making sure that we are continuing the process of updating, engaging in getting feedback from both our teachers and students to make this as useful as possible, providing opportunities for social and emotional programming for students. This we started last year, and you might have heard of like, our DBT, or dialectical behavior therapy groups. These are things that students sign up for. They want additional time with counselors to meet in groups, and we have like, four full groups running now. So we probably have more students that want to participate. It's not necessarily like they, they need it, or they have to, they choose to, and they want to be there. So this is something that they feel is good for them, and our counselors are making available. I know Mrs. Ward is taking on a little larger role this year, so our counselors are feeling more and more comfortable in, in, you know, running these groups, so it's great for our kids. And another item that they wanted to get completed right off the bat is making sure that we have a co-teaching cohort here, in all schools. And when you have two teachers in a room, it's really great and useful, but if you can't get those two teachers the same prep, it really limits their effectiveness. So one of the things we wanted to do was make sure that when we went through the scheduling process over the summer, that we prioritized making sure our co-teacher, our special education teacher, and our typical classroom teacher, whether it's ELA or math, had the same preps, so that they can be together on a regular basis to co-plan, co-teach, and then co-assess as needed. So not huge steps, but definitely important steps just to get the other things going. So I really want to say I'm very impressed with all of our admin for all the work that they did in the summer, getting ready for this, and really jumping right in as the, as the new school year started, and getting going on our, our SDI actions. So.
Awesome.
I know that was pretty quick and brief, but we're still early in the school year, so happy to entertain any questions.
I should have one question. You may have said it. What does MLL stand for?
So multilingual students, so.
Okay.
Learners, multilingual learners. So they've just changed the, the way they describe it, so.
That's replacing ELL?
It's complicated. Honestly, if I could explain it all to you right now, Kate Walsh has been in at each of the staff meetings this year to kind of say, like, there's some different acronyms being utilized. EL is still acceptable, but the state is kind of moving to ML, so that's where we are. Just trying to stay current. I get hard to keep up with these acronyms.
And the level of support varies in that program. Some kids are receiving direct response, direct supports, some kids are being monitored.
Yeah, it really depends on what their access tests tell us they require, so there's different levels. And then we have former EL students that our EL department or ML department is still responsible for, even though they have kind of tested out of services, we're still required to check in with them, making sure that, so, I mean, that doesn't sound like a lot, just check in, but there's paperwork involved with that, too. So I'd say our, that department is, is working very hard to keep up with everything.
And just as a point of context, I know, I did receive an email from Bert asking questions about that. I think seven or eight years ago, we had a .6 EL teacher in the district. We're almost at four .0 full-time staff, monitoring or following almost 200 students in the district, so it certainly has grown.
Yeah, I think we're at 193, and it's, it's going up every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? I did have one question last year. We, it was a big focus on absenteeism. Have we seen any improvements over the first month of this year?
Yes, actually, we have received the state's initial accountability report. It's not finalized yet, so they said it could change a little bit, but as far as our accountability scores, we scored very high in our chronic absenteeism, meaning that ours have come down significantly. So I'm happy to share that with you at a, a future meeting. I think we talked about it the last spring, the initial numbers looked good.
Yes.
Well, final numbers looked really good as well, so.
Awesome.
Happy to report that. I think we still have some ways to go, but as far as making significant progress, states this, we have, and I would agree.
Awesome. Good news. All right, thank you. New business B. Desi, final report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've included in the drive the final report received two weeks ago from Desi. As you recall, Ms. Lewenzek actually teased us out last November that we're having tier-focused monitoring. We have, and Desi sent a team onto campus in June to really look at every aspect of our special education programming, as well as our civil rights, and they do a comprehensive in-depth dive. They meet with people, they look at paperwork, they have several interviews set up. At the end of that, they, they look at everything that you do, and they formalize a summary, at which point, generally, a lot of districts receive some kind of corrective action. I'm very pleased to say that we received zero areas to improve on. Outstanding job by our entire department there. Specific areas that they look at, it's included on the slide here, they look at student assessments, determination of eligibility, IEP, the team process, development, and implementation. When they look at civil rights, it's bullying, student discipline, physical restraint, and equal access to school programs for all students. So I'm very proud to say that, that we were not cited anywhere, and there's no corrective action needed on behalf of Tinswell Public Schools, so thank you all for, for, for your hard work there. So feel free to look at that report if you have specific questions. Please feel free to email myself or Ms. Lewenzek.
That's a great report. Thank you.
It is, yes, thank you.
And 9D, approved homeschool plan.
Mr. Chair, I will take this one. Approved homeschool plans for 24, 25. Derek and Julie Adams, they're two children, on grade two. Chris and Heather Black, they're seven children, ages 18, 16, 14, 12, 10, 7, 5. Kate Edwards and Frank Giudita, Giudita, one child in grade two. Melissa and Alfred Gilmet, one child in grade five.[1737.12] Melissa and Alfred Gilmet, one child in grade five. Rebecca and Michael Kenery, one child, grade two. Corliss and Angelina Lambert, three children, grades 1, 3, 5. Michelle and Chris McNally, one child, grade eight. Paul and Jill Marcia, two children, grades six and 12. Jolena Warnock and Chris Montezillos Jr., two children, ages six and seven. Christina Masudi, Christina and Masudi Maguwa, one child in kindergarten. Kenneth and Kristen, whose last name did not make the agenda here, I apologize, two children in grades five and 11. Adam and Lydia Shaw, two children, grades, ages seven and nine. And Eureka Lord, one child, grade six. Those have all been approved.
All right, thank you. Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 12 bill warrants were presented to the school committee tonight. I do have them all back approved. As always, the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in the drive. Nothing for signing of payroll tonight, we will catch up at our next meeting, and that is it for finance.
Thank you. School committee discussion, starting with Evan.
Thank you.
Yeah, just want to thank the high school administration, the students, it was a great presentation. Unfortunately, I wasn't here for the last meeting for the middle school, but I did watch that, and I wanted to thank them, as well as the TMS administration, they did a great job.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, I know Evan touched on this, but for my parents, that tomorrow night is the THS open house from 6:30 to 8:30, and then on Thursday night, TES has their open house from 6:00 to 7:00. I know, you know, the high school one, the kids don't get as excited for the parents to show up as the elementary school, but I know my elementary school students are very excited to show me their classroom, so I hope everybody can get up to those.
Nothing for me, thank you.
I'm all set.
I'm all set, thanks.
Nothing this evening?
Evan, great job as always. Same thing with, yeah, partner there, Sabrina, I think the students always do an amazing job. I love that you're celebrating the late 1900s, that's, you know, where we're from, so we really appreciate that.
I wish I said congratulations to Sabrina before she left, so please tell her I said great job, nice job, everything on your part as well. But you're very comfortable in that role, so you should do well there. Thank you to our special education department for their fine work. That report certainly is something we're proud of. I do want to take a minute now, just on a personal level, to recognize and thank Chief Howe, who is retiring at the end of this week. Excuse me. Chief Howe has been a big supporter of the school system. He's carried on a lot of the traditions and legacies that were once started by Larry Kelleher and Chief Cronopolis. He expanded the, that being the Adopt a Family Program. He's certainly expanded and made a commitment to the School Resource Officer Program, which we absolutely are benefiting from. SR Augustin is doing a phenomenal job for us. So Chief Howe has been an advocate, a proponent, and a parent of Tingsboro graduates, so I want to thank him for his years of service to the community, and wish him all the best in his retirement.
All right, thank you. So we do have a need for executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competency, of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public official, employee, staff member, or individual. We will return from executive session only to adjourn our regular scheduled meeting, and this will require a roll call vote, once I have a motion.
I will make the motion and go into executive session.
Second?
Roll call vote?
Yes.
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
All right, thank you all, and have a good night.
Night.